...per week with its food pantry, piloting and mentoring program for boys at the Bonneville Elementary School and working closely with the East Orange County Community Center to improve the quality of life for our east Orlando County residents. He is also one of our chaplains. So Chaplain Faberge, if you will come to the podium, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Sheehan following the invocation. Everybody would please join me in standing.
Eternal Creator and Father, we are most thankful for the opportunity to gather this afternoon. We thank you for the care and protection you have provided to the city of Orlando and its strong leadership. We invoke your mighty presence in this place as the city council gathers together, O Lord. I particularly lift up Mayor Dyer and the men and women who labor under his leadership. I beg that you, O God, pour down divine wisdom upon these leaders. May decisions made in the moments to come benefit those who call the city beautiful home. May your redemptive purposes come to pass in Orlando. And in advance, we profess our deepest gratitude to you. It is in your precious and holy name that we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lineham.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the meeting minutes from the workshop agenda of the city council meetings of March the 25th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, I don't think our council chambers have ever been this full for a regular meeting of the Orlando City Council. And I'm very appreciative of that because usually you expect large crowds when they're here to protest against something. So having people here that are volunteers in service of our community and the recognitions that we will be having this morning, that is much more gratifying than having a crowd of pitchforks and evil eyes and things like that. So we appreciate everybody that has joined us here today. Commissioner Stewart thinks you're here to see him in his seersucker suit. And, but...
Be careful.
This morning, we had to remind him, you might think it's Memorial Day weekend this co- this weekend, right? Because most people don't break those seersucker suits out until Memorial Day weekend and then through Labor Day. So later on today, we're going to have, actually, we'll take an informal vote of the crowd right now. Who out there thinks it's okay to wear a seersucker suit before Memorial Day weekend? All right, then we will hereby adopt Orlando rules that make it okay to wear a seersucker suit after Easter holiday through Halloween. How about that? That will be our Orlando rules. Okay. We have a few awards and presentations, and I'm going to call on Lisa Early to start us off.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners, and I am really honored today because I have several family parks-
You know, since we have so many people that don't regularly attend city council meetings, I will mention that Lisa is our Director of Family Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We are where the fun starts. And I know I have a lot of our FPR staff in the audience here because we're recognizing a lot of our staff. So this is an amazing honor for me. And the first thing we're going to start with is an award to Julie Os, who has been on staff with the Parks Division for 26 years, and she is so amazingly deserving of this award. So I am going to introduce Wayne Zimmerman, who is Manager of Construction and Maintenance at OUC, but he is here today in his capacity as Vice President of the Florida Urban Forestry Council, and he is giving an amazing award to Julie. So, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor Dyer, Commissioners. It gives me great pleasure to recognize Julie Os, the City of Orlando. Julie Os has spent many years of her professional career promoting the quality trees. She decided dedicated in learning and educating others about urban forestry. Julie's name is the equivalent with quality in the tree care industry. She has always been passionate about tree quality and is a huge proponent of the Right Tree, Right Place Program. A program that ensures not only that we are the city beautiful, but also the reliable one. Julie has had many outstanding accomplishments over the years in her career. She has over 30 years of technical landscape knowledge. As Horticulture Manager for the City of Orlando Parks Division, Julie oversees the state regulated pesticide applications, the city nursery operations, landscape maintenance crews, tree planting coordination, and in the entire irrigation department. Even though Julie is not the city's urban forester, her passion for trees is well evidenced in her annual commitment to ensure the city of Orlando continues to receive the ArborDaze Foundation, Tree City USA, and Tree Growth Awards. Julie cares about trees wholeheartedly everywhere, and her support of educating about trees is tireless. It is my honor to recognize Julie Os, the 2012 Friends of Our Urban Forest Lifetime Achievement Award. (Applause) This friend is a visitor at Tampa Tree Expo. It's a beautiful friend. She does the small, the Florida Urban Forestry Council.
Officer, in recognition of national service. Marcia.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners. Good afternoon. National service is something that I think we all know a little bit about, but we probably could learn more about. And tomorrow, Mayor Dyer will join more than 600 mayors in all 50 states to recognize April 9th as the Mayor's Day of Recognition of National Service. Through a partnership with the Corporation for National and Community Service, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the Cities of Service, we are pleased to acknowledge the value of national service in metro Orlando. Today, the mayor actually invited AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps members from metro Orlando to join us for this recognition, and we have many of them here. More than 800 persons currently serve, giving a year or more of their lives as members of national service in metro Orlando. In fact, right now, we have five AmeriCorps Vista members staffing Orlando Cares, working with us, and also one supporting our Paramore Kids Zone in the city of Orlando. Since 2012, we've had more than a dozen national service providers who have helped us with our city programs and had very high impact with our volunteer programs. Our vistas are key to our program's success. I know that we have representatives here from the Corporation for National and Community Service, and I would like to introduce for a quick introduction, my friend and colleague, our partner Suzanne Richards, who is the State Director of the Corporation for National and Community Service. And she will introduce the proclamation, Mayor, before you read it.
Thank you, Marcia. Thank you, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners, for inviting our national service programs here today. And we appreciate your work so much. We know that you're all about strengthening communities and improving the quality of life in the city of Orlando. We appreciate your work. And today, I'd just like to recognize with Mayor Dyer that we have several organizations as well as several hundred volunteers. In fact, we have 1,200 volunteers, national service volunteers, that are serving right here in the city of Orlando. And they represent many, many organizations, over 70 partnering organizations. But today here, we have AmeriCorps programs, we have City Year Orlando, we have Public Allies, and I'm hoping I'm not forgetting any others. We also have Vista sponsors, volunteers, and Service to America. Those are the volunteers that focus on building the capacity of nonprofit organizations to fight poverty here in Orlando. So we have, the city of Orlando is one of our sponsors, we have the Paramore Kids Zone, we have the University of Central Florida, Heart of Florida United Way, Central Florida Urban League, and we have National Coalition for the Homeless, we have Home Builders Incorporated, and we have many, many more that aren't represented here today. And we also have our RSVP program where we engage volunteers age 55 and older to improve the quality of life here. They're sponsored by Florida Volunteers, Inc. We also have the Foster Grandparent Volunteers that are senior volunteers themselves that work with at-risk youth to provide mentoring and tutoring. So day in, day out, we have several hundreds and thousands of volunteers making a difference right here in Orlando. So we appreciate Mayor Dyer recognizing our volunteers through the Day of Recognition of National Service volunteers. Thank you very much, and I believe Mayor Dyer is going to introduce the proclamation.
Thank you. City of Orlando proclamation, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas our nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nations, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and whereas national service participants demonstrate patriotism and dedication by making an intensive commitment to service through direct service and by managing millions of volunteers in more than 70,000 locations across the country, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. Now therefore, I, Mayor Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2013, as National Service Recognition Day in the city of Orlando, and encourage our residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city.[835.32][835.32](Applause) Okay.
Would all of our national service members come forward, please, for a photo with the mayor? I know, it's going to be a big one.
Yeah.
You over there, Mayor, we're going to picture you.
And Suzanne will receive the proclamation.
Wow. This'll work.
And we'll have to have you fan out a little bit.
It isn't been a bad one.
It should be 10, I keep telling you.
You don't pay attention to me.
I have to go back to 10.
I gotta have something.
Can I wear you on my leash?
How old are you?
Okay, now I'm going to call on Anna Palanzuela, our Human Resources Division Manager, to introduce the McNamara Employee of the Year Awards. Anna?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and invited guests. The purpose of the city's employee recognition program is to motivate, recognize, and retain good employees. The most prestigious award given by this program is the Dennis McNamara Employee of the Year Award. This year, we received a record number of 33 nominations, and only four could be selected for this prestigious award. Through the generosity of the Dennis McNamara family, we are able to reward and recognize extraordinary public service to the city of Orlando. The McNamara family has sponsored this award for the past 27 years. Meg McNamara McGee and Mary Ann Vichyroel are present. I would like you to stand so we can recognize you. Thank you so much for your continued support. And now, the announcement you've been waiting for. The recipients of the 2012 Dennis McNamara Employee of the Year Award are Taryn Rutkowitz, Tyrone Walker, Captain Richard Ring, and Judy Baez. The department directors for each of these outstanding employees will now come to the podium and introduce their employees. The first presenter is FPR Director Lisa Early, to be followed by Police Chief Paul Rooney and Public Works Director Rick Howard.
Lisa, or Vichy? Thank you very much, and hello again, Commissioners, and I just want to personally thank the McNamara Foundation family. And I don't know how much you know about how important this is to our employees, but this means so much to them to get this award, and I just want to say personally how much we appreciate you guys doing this. It means a lot. So, before I start talking about our first award winner, Taryn Rutkowitz, I have been told that I need to say hi to her dad, who's watching this on TV.[1217.12][1217.12](Laughter) You raised a great daughter. She is an amazing person. Okay, so Taryn is the Regional Center Manager at the Englewood Community Center.
Very good.
Commissioner Ortiz. And this is the busiest community center in the city, and as a matter of fact, in the seven years that Taryn has run that place, the attendance at that site has more than doubled. And I have to say that this level of activity is a reflection of Taryn Rutkowitz herself, not to mention the community and the Commissioner, of course, but, but Taryn herself, who makes every aspect of that site inviting, exciting, and easily accessible. She has an amazing vibrant spirit, and she transmits that everywhere that she goes. And even her district commissioner loves her. Look at him right there, big smile on his face. So there are two things that I'm going to say about Taryn. And the first one is that she is a true leader in every sense of the word. So I want you to picture in your minds a selfless person carrying a torch, followed by the many people who are following her to a better place. And of all the people that follow her, I think the two most significant that I want to talk about are her own staff, number one, and number two, the children of Englewood. So first, I'm going to talk about her staff. She supervises, Taryn supervises about 50 people. And for those of you who know how a community center operates, a lot of those staff are youth. They're hired on a temporary basis to work as counselors during summer camp and our after-school programs. And for most of them, working at Englewood is their first job. They are young, they're inexperienced, and they take care of the most precious thing that we have, other people's children. Hundreds of them at Englewood alone, each and every day, all year round. Taryn is amazingly skilled, understanding, experienced at training and supervising these staff. But even more, she has helped them, she has taken them under her wing and helped them build their careers. So, you know, what you see under Taryn, and some of the people are in the audience today, are people whose own careers were built under her, who came into Englewood as young counselors and moved up the ranks into more responsible jobs. Some examples, Freddie Sintron, who was hired as a youth counselor and under Taryn's guidance worked his way up to being the number two at Englewood. Or Randolph Holloman, who began his city career as a youth counselor under Taryn, and now he is actually running one of our community centers. Or Alex Timm, and I know, I saw her in the audience, who also began her career as a youth counselor, and ultimately, under Taryn's wing, worked her way up the chain. And now, when you hear about us moving into having an after-school feeding program for all children across the city in our centers, she's the one making that happen. Taryn has personally helped her staff grow into remarkable, capable, and economically successful young adults. So now, I want to talk about Taryn's commitment to the children of Englewood. And that's not just the children who enroll in her programs, but the children who hang around outside the community center. Children whose parents can't dedicate the time to enroll their kids in our programs. Children who are pushed out of other places. Children who sometimes other people don't even want to deal with. As Commissioner Ortiz can tell you, sometimes the Englewood community has problems with crime, which often impact the community center that Taryn runs. So how does she respond? She makes the center part of the solution. So for example, in the early morning hours, when youth used to hang around outside of Englewood, smoking and getting into trouble, what did Taryn do? She opened up the site earlier so they could go inside into the gym and shoot hoops there, supervised and doing something productive and safe. And when a 16-year-old gang member was murdered, Taryn organized a candlelight vigil in the neighborhood and personally began spending extra time with the involved kids, recruiting them into programs at her site. Taryn takes troubled kids under her wing and gets them back on track. So I have a couple of examples. One is a young lady named Janice, and she was in middle school in Englewood and kept getting into fights. So under Taryn's guidance, Janice became a counselor at the center, a junior counselor at the center, then a counselor, then a lead seasonal employee, and now she's an after-school all-star supervisor at Howard Middle School. She's a graduate of Colonial High School and a student at Valencia College. Another kid that Taryn took under her wing was Chris. He came to Englewood in middle school, he got himself arrested, but with Taryn's mentorship, he got back into school, he graduated from high school, he was recruited onto the college basketball team, and ultimately graduated from Georgia Perimeter Community College in Atlanta. So that is really, I think, what tells the story of what kind of a person that Taryn Rutkowitz is. She is a leader, she carries a brilliant torch, and I've given you just a few examples of the people who have been inspired by her, turned around by her, saved by her, and achieved against the odds because of her. But I also want to tell you about the pride I have for the city's Recreation Division, and Taryn is a remarkable example of why. She is one of the many people who we say grew up in the Recreation Division. She began attending Englewood Neighborhood Center as a young child enrolled in summer camp. Her love for the community, the center, and the city encouraged her to later become a youth counselor. She was soon promoted to lead counselor at Englewood, and then again promoted to a full-time regional recreation specialist, and later she became the community center manager at Colonial Town Neighborhood Center. Destiny brought her back to Englewood, where she was again promoted, this time to the regional center manager seven years ago. Her extraordinary performance thus resulted in evermore responsibility within the city's Recreation Division, dating all the way back to when she was a little girl in summer camp. And the same way that Taryn has helped build her people, the way I described before, there were people back then and throughout in the city's Recreation Division who built Taryn. Some of them are here today. This is our department's proud legacy. In the Recreation Division, we have a saying for employees like Taryn: "They have grown up with us." Taryn's achievements inspire our employees and all the children who attend our programs to do the same. We are proud to have her on our team.[1643.24][1643.24](Applause) Well, I have another employee to recognize. Also in the Recreation Division, and that is Tyrone Walker. So Tyrone is District Manager in our Recreation Division, and there are a million great things that I can say about Tyrone and the work he has done since he started as a lifeguard at the Turkey Lake Park in 1995. I can talk about all the youth sports programs that he volunteers coaches for during his spare time, or the fact that in the past few years, he's been working on his degree in public administration, but there- Well, I have another employee to recognize. Also in the Recreation Division, and that is Tyrone Walker.[563.82][563.82](Applause). So Tyrone is District Manager in our Recreation Division, and there are a million great things that I can say about Tyrone and the work he has done since he started as a lifeguard at the Turkey Lake Park in 1995. I can talk about all the youth sports programs that he volunteers coaches for during his spare time, or the fact that in the past few years, he's been working on his degree in public administration, but there are two things that stand out the most about Tyrone that I'm going to talk about. First, he is an amazing team player and team leader. The Recreation Division has a culture of engaging staff and planning committees, and since Tyrone is always the guy who's ready to get involved, to take the lead, to help the Recreation Division get to the next level, he's a staple member of many of the division's planning committees. And so the one that I am going to talk about is the secret weapon of the family's Parks and Recreation Department: the Recreation Golf Tournament Committee. And as Chairman of the Recreation Golf Tournament Committee, Tyrone helped lead our department in raising $23,000 for this year's Employee Giving Campaign, catapulting our department to the number-one status of all city departments when it comes (Applause) to exceeding our Employee Giving Campaign goal. Yes, that's right, let's say it again, FPR was number one.[658.87][658.87](Laughter). Number one among city departments, beating our goal by over 200%, thanks to dedicated work of Tyrone Walker and his comrades in the Recreation Division. You can all stand if you want.[673.82][673.82](Applause). So to all other city departments, I will say this: in FPR, we like to compete, Tyrone Walker likes to compete, and sometimes we even trash-talk the competition. So game on next year. But on a serious note, on a serious note, in my mind, what really makes Tyrone most deserving of this award is his longstanding work operating the city's 11 pools and aquatics programs that serve thousands and thousands and thousands of city residents every year. It's not just that he has worked diligently and with great skill and commitment in the past two years to recover the program after suffering serious setbacks due to budget cuts. It's not just that he has worked diligently to bring it under budget, or that he has identified and diligently worked to reduce utility overages caused by leaking CO2 units, or that he has virtually eliminated service calls for requests for repairs. It's his commitment to the safety of children in our pools that stands out the most. One of the things the city does, of all the things the city does, I'm sorry, there are not many that are more dangerous than little kids, many who don't know how to swim, hanging around our pools every day, all over the city, from Rosemont in the north, to Smith in the west, to Englewood in the east, to Bill Frederick Park in the south. Thousands of little kids every single day. Add to this the fact that we employ hundreds of lifeguards every summer, virtually all of them teenagers, many of them in their first jobs. I can tell you this one thing without a doubt: Tyrone is the man for this job. Pool safety is his life, it is his passion, it is his commitment, it is his special talent. There is no city, no YMCA, no county, no place that operates pools that can boast a better person to run its pools than Tyrone Walker at the City of Orlando. Nobody can keep our children safe like Tyrone, and for that, I am grateful every single day to him.
Mayor, Commissioners. Now, Anna P. told us, myself and Rick Howard, to keep it under two minutes, now we know Okay, let me get right to it. Rich Ring is a cop's cop. He's a leader. And it was interesting, when you heard the numbers, 33 were nominated throughout the whole city, and only four, only four, received the McNamara Award. And I want to make this clear, because I'm already hearing the rumors. Rich Ring has some family members that are also Orlando police officers, and no, we did not submit all the rings, and if I could just have Travis, and these are his sons, and Matt, stand up at this time.[941.82][941.82](Applause). He also has a daughter-in-law, Sharon, who's also an Orlando police officer, so no, we did not stack the deck by submitting all the rings for the McNamara Award, it was just Richard. And I just want to thank Deputy Chief Carl Metzger for nominating Richard. Also with Richard today is his wife of over 30 years, Vanna.[966.43][966.43](Applause). And I think that's important, but truly, the Ring family, talk about all in the family here, we're seeing it firsthand here. But I'll get right to it. I mentioned before, Rich is truly a cop's cop. He's a hands-on commander. During this submission, he was a lieutenant last year. He was a lieutenant, and since then, he's been promoted to captain, and you'll hear why. Basically, when he was a lieutenant last year, he was over the Special Patrol Commander. He had our K-9 units and our Mounted Patrol units, our Reserve units, and we had a very, very busy year, as we all know, throughout the city. He worked numerous events and special details throughout the year to include the Magic Games, the arena events, the concerts, and Mayor, yes, he did say, if Paul McCartney was there last year, he would have been the commander over that concert as well. Parades, Central Florida Fair, Citrus Bowl events, and more importantly, one of our major events was the NBA All-Star Game last year. A very busy event, several days, and we heard nothing but compliments about, at the time, Lieutenant Rich Ring. He dealt with the management from both Amway and the NBA security, providing a safe environment with a balanced budget. Yes, a balanced budget. He managed 20 K-9 teams from eight different law enforcement agencies. 20 K-9 teams from eight different law enforcement agencies. That's like herding cats. Captain Ring was responsible for both the venue and checkpoints during the game. And I just want to share this quote that I received from the NBA Security Manager that stated, "Rich was one of the most professional law enforcement commanders they had ever worked with, and felt that Lieutenant Ring's efforts were outstanding in every way." And again, NBA security managers travel all over the country. He coordinated numerous dignitary visits and numerous escorts of the President of the United States last year. On the cost-saving measures, Rich saved the department $25,000, $25,000 by comparing dogs from various kennels and negotiating the price without compromising the quality of the dogs. He also saved the city over $5,000 on the Mounted Patrol Initiative, where he located a horse for Mounted Patrol, saving the city over $5,000. Additionally, he's a commander of our Emergency Response Team. He played a huge role last summer in the Republican National Convention with the crowd management, and I personally received both from Sheriff G. from Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and Chief Jane Castor from Tampa PD, compliments about Rich, and how his command presence and really taking control of the Emergency Response Team and making it a very well-organized event. Just other traits, I mentioned he's a hands-on commander, he's a true leader, he's got an outstanding attitude, he's all about providing good customer service, and like I stated, I recently promoted Rich to captain, and just within three days of promoting him to captain, he found out that he was a recipient of the McNamara Award, and he said, "I am truly blessed." And Rich, today, I will say back to you that the City of Orlando, the community, the Orlando Police Department is truly blessed to have you as a commander.
Mayor, Commissioners, I am pleased to be standing before you with our Public Works McNamara Employee of the Year Award recipient, and I wanted to introduce her, her name is Mrs. Jody Biaus. She's been our Keep Orlando Beautiful Coordinator now for six and a half years. Of all the people that I know in the environmental business, Jody is probably the most passionate person I know about the environment, and her dedication to keeping Orlando beautiful and healthy is extraordinary. Just last year, 2012, list some of her accomplishments. She coordinated over 130 cleanup and special events, which resulted in the collection of 17 tons of litter and debris, recycled four and a half tons of materials, recycled 11.2 tons of electronics, and her efforts in securing almost 10,000 volunteer hours and in-kind donations saved the city over $257,000.[1344.51][1344.51](Applause). Also last year, Jody coordinated the efforts with partners and volunteers to paint the downtown recreation center. A building that's over 32,000 square feet required 230 gallons of donated paint and saved the city over $30,000. Of all these special events, she also coordinates on an ongoing basis the city's graffiti prevention and removal program, coordinates the school environmental club program in Orange County public schools, puts on an annual environmental education resource expo for Orange County teachers. She coordinates the Adopt a Street program, the Adopt a Stop program, and coordinates all the efforts of the Keep Orlando Beautiful Advisory Board. She even addresses pet waste with the Stop the Pollution (Laughter) Education Program. In addition, she has secured many thousands of dollars in grant funding from local businesses and national firms such as Wells Fargo and Waste Management. For all of these accomplishments and all of the many things that she does, Jody is truly deserving of the recognition that the McNamara Employee of the Year Award offers. And thanks to the McNamara family for sponsoring the award.
Okay, so we are back to Marcia for National Volunteer Appreciation Month.
Thank you once again, Mayor and City Commissioners. We are pleased to have a recognition today. As you know, April is National Volunteer Month, and each year in April, we acknowledge and thank our very valuable citizen volunteers who serve in support of city operations and programs. Last year, more than 1,000 citizens gave countless hours serving as coaches, serving on city boards and advisory committees, mentoring children, and working in a variety of city departments, offices, and divisions. In recognition of their outstanding volunteer efforts in support of our city operations and our community, we have asked them to come today to accept our thanks and join us as we celebrate their service. We appreciate all of our volunteers who support city operations, including Mayor Dyer's Cities of Service Initiative, Orlando Cares volunteers, and other volunteers, and we invite everyone who would like to volunteer for the city but hasn't started yet to visit our website, orlandocares.net, to volunteer in support of our youth development programs through Orlando Cares. These volunteers are making a huge difference in student literacy and academic advancement. Now, at this time, Mayor, I would ask that you would read the proclamation, and then we would ask all of the volunteers that are here, that volunteer for city operations of any kind, to please join the mayor for a photograph.
Thank you, Marcia. City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas President Barack Obama has designated the month of April as a time to recognize the hard work, dedication, and compassion of volunteers throughout our nation, and whereas last year nearly 65 million Americans gave their time and service to our nation, and whereas the City of Orlando commemorated National Volunteer Month and recognized the dedication of its valued volunteers at the annual Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Reception earlier today, and whereas the City of Orlando is committed to encouraging volunteerism among its employees, citizen partners, businesses, and organizations, and whereas the City of Orlando is a proud member of the Cities of Service Coalition, now therefore I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of April as National Volunteer Month in the Okay, so we've got five more to go. One more to go. Okay, Patricia Newton, Assistant Director of the Office of Community Okay, Patricia Newton, Assistant Director of the Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations, will preview Fair Housing Month for us.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Commissioners. April is Fair Housing Month. And to celebrate, the city will host, along with several partners, on Tuesday, April 30th, One Community Growing Together, Regional Approaches to Creating Inclusive Communities. It's our second annual Regional Fair Housing Month, with about 300 people slated to attend 13 different workshops on strategies for creating more inclusive communities that address the nuts and bolts issues of how to implement an inclusionary zoning ordinance or law, and how to create a rent referral program aimed at creating integrated communities, an at-home diversity workshop that teaches real estate agents how to work effectively with the rapidly changing multicultural market, to domestic violence and fair housing, veterans in fair housing, and Fair Housing 101 enforcement. Some of you joined us last year, and I would like to personally invite you to join us this year. Commissioner Stewart was there, and Commissioner Eames joined us, along with Mayor Dyer. This year, we're having Jim Carr as our keynote speaker. He is a Senior Fellow with the Center for American Progress and distinguished scholar with the Opportunity Agenda. He served as Chief Business Officer for the National Community Reinvestment Coalition, where he helped minority and women-owned businesses access 1.8 billion in capital. He also served as Senior Vice President for Financial Innovation Planning and Research for the Fannie Mae Foundation. And for more information about the summit, residents should go to www.fairhousingsummit.info. You know, the city has set an example throughout Florida by eliminating barriers that prevented equal treatment or access for Orlando citizens. And since the reorganization of our office in 2009, the Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations has invigorated its fair housing unit. And last fiscal year, we closed 13 fair housing discrimination complaints, garnering nearly 30,000 that was awarded to us by the U.S. Department of Housing Urban Development. And I'd like to publicly thank David Gillespie. He's our fair housing investigator for doing a fantastic job. Thank you, David. Would you stand?[786.81][786.81][applause] This office continues to be responsible for establishing and maintaining communication among city government, the general public, and community organizations promoting equal opportunity. And I'd like to introduce our remaining human relations staff, who are responsible for the city's civil rights initiatives. And that's Carmen Feliciano, Virginia Moore, and Ron Wilson wasn't able to be with us, but we thank all of you, and we're under the leadership of our dedicated director, Marcia I have some of our partners here. I'm going to make this short. I think I'm the shortest one up here today. And our partners are here, we have from Community Legal Services of Mid-Florida, Miratana Luxmi Panzardi, and Carmen Miraball. Would you stand?[859.62][859.62][applause] From Consumer Debt Counselors, we have Charlene Rose.[865.43][865.43][applause] The Florida Civil Rights Association, Daisy Morales.[872.12][872.12][applause] And all the way from Lake County, we have Shawna Chansey.[877.12][877.12][applause] Thank you all for partnering with the City of Orlando. And I also have two of the Chapter 57 Review Board members who back us and support us, and they're advocates for us out in the community. And that's Louis Preston Jr. from Florida Hospital, and Abdullah Thoreau, who is Chairman of our Chapter 57 Review Board. He's VP of Sales for Thoreau's and Company. Would you please stand?[908.12][908.12][applause] Thank you very much for your volunteerism. We appreciate that. Mayor?
Thank you, Patricia. Good job. City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas April 11, 2013 marks the 45th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which firms a national policy of fair housing, and whereas fair and equal housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans, and whereas all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means, and whereas April 9, 2013 marks the 40th anniversary of the City of Orlando's passage of the Chapter 57 Code of the City of Orlando, and whereas the City of Orlando continues its commitment to affirmatively advancing fair housing, and whereas the Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations encourages all citizens to participate in Orlando's Fair Housing Summit, One Community Growing Together, Regional Approaches to Creating Inclusive Communities, and a series of activities that support the federal fair housing law, now therefore I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the month Okay, just to set the record straight, and since I forgot at the beginning, and unfortunately, Commissioner Sheehan, we don't have the same number in the crowd. Pinchord is an offshoot of Seersucker, so the same rules will apply to Pinchord, although we do stretch them a little bit for ladies anyways.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm hereby scolded, although I know I have given you some fashion advice in the past, too. I just haven't recalled you out on it.[1090.08][1090.08][laughter]
Okay, let's, how about, how lengthy Mayor's up there.[1100.33][1100.33][laughter] Let's see. Okay, many of you are aware that this year we celebrate 500 years since Ponce de Leon arrived on Florida's east coast. And one little-known fact you may not know, that he was born in a village on the northern part of Viadaleed, which is one of our nine sister cities, and the only new sister city since I've been mayor in the last 10 years. There are a lot of events and festivals to honor this milestone, and I encourage you to visit, how do you say this, Commissioner Ortiz? Viva Florida.
Viva.
Viva.
Viva Florida.
Say it for me.
Viva. You had it right.
I know. I just wanted to hear you say it.[1147.41][1147.41][laughter] VivaFlorida.org. Okay, we had a great announcement this morning. And since we have opened the Amway Center, you think about everything that we've been able to host and things that are coming up. NBA All-Star Game in 2012, we've got the Arena Bowl later this year. Next year, we've got the second, third rounds of the men's NCAA basketball tournament. And today, we were able to announce that Paul McCartney will be kicking off his Out There Tour on May 18 in our own Amway Center. It's been 20 years since Paul McCartney performed in Orlando at an event in our Citrus Bowl. I don't know if those were still rock Super Bowls at the time, but he was here 20 years ago in 1993. Tickets go on sale on April 12 at 10:00 a.m., and I suspect that will sell out fairly quickly. All right, this past Friday, is Byron here? There he is. Byron Brooks, our Chief Administrative Officer, was inducted by the University of Central Florida School of Public Administration as an honorary member of the Pi Alpha Alpha Fraternity, which is a national, I almost said sorority, but I guess it's, maybe it's actually society versus fraternity.[1231.83][1231.83][laughter] It's the National Honor Society for Public Affairs and Administration. And this was in recognition of Byron's professional accomplishments in service in the field of public administration and for his support of UCF's public administration program. He serves as the Chairman of the School of Public Administration Advisory Board, which consists of city, county, and authority advisors in private sector. So congratulations, Byron.[1258.33][1258.33][applause] Okay, I just have two items that I want to mention on the consent agenda. Earlier this year, EDV II, the City of Orlando Council approved the Central Station Master Plan for our first transit-oriented development project in the core of the city. Today, we're taking the next step towards realizing that by approving the Central Station plat, creating two lots on the projected site for planned residential, commercial, retail, and hotel development. And then the other item that I want to mention is an item that relates to Sea Art Orlando and its agreement to place one of the sculpted pieces at the History Center, which will be on Orange County process. And I wanted to give you a quick update on the Sea Art Orlando project. About three and a half years ago, I was with a group of very arts-minded people that have a great interest in our downtown, and we were talking about how much progress we've made in downtown, but what's missing. And what was missing is great sculpted art. You go to other cities like Chicago, or New York, or even Charlotte, and you think about being photographed with a bean, or the love statue, or whatever. And about the only piece we have is what? Our Tower of Light. So we, once they identified the problem, I asked them to help us fix that issue. So Jennifer Quigley is chairing a group, and we have gone out and raised about $1,005,000 in private funding. We did a call to artists and got over 200 artists from around the country and even international that wanted to be part of it. We culled that down, and working with the benefactor of each of the locations, have chosen eight pieces of wonderful iconic sculpted art that will be placed within a two-mile walking trail of the Tower of Light. So you'll be able to start at the Tower of Light and walk around Lake Yola and come back and view all eight pieces of art. We have contracts with all of the artists, and they are creating the pieces. We have all the money in hand, and we expect to install the pieces in September and then have a public celebration in October. And I look very much forward to notice meetings and share what the pieces are and what they look like with you in the next month. Okay, and that's all I have. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the Commissioners an opportunity to comment, as I did, on things that are important within their district or on specific items from the consent agenda. We rotate the order in which each Commissioner has the opportunity to speak, and today we'll begin with Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Mayor Dyer. First of all, I'd like to say what an honor it is to join Commissioner Stewart on the worst dressed list.
Not worst dressed, just timing, because you know I love Seersucker and Pinchord.
It's all good.
And actually, I enjoy the fact that we've now moved it back to Easter in October, so I'll be good to go next week.
We're just trendsetters, Mayor. Thank you very much. And well, first of all, I'd like to recognize Julie Yost, who does amazing work. You know, I've been working with her for many, many years, when I was even a volunteer with planting trees and stuff like that. She does amazing work, so that's just a wonderful award for her. And also, the McNamara employees, I know all of them, I've worked with them, Taryn Rutkowitz does a great job, Tyrone Walker, Captain Rich Ring, and Jody Baez, they all are amazing individuals and very much deserve that award. So thank you to the McNamara family. And yeah, these are all outstanding city employees. A lot of times, people don't understand, because things go so well in our city, how hard these folks work, and they just do an amazing job. Item C4 on the agenda today is urban chickens. I want to thank Commissioner Eames for opting in, and I'd just like to say that my family crest, I just had a friend do my genealogy and found out that my family crest is actually a chicken.[1519.65][1519.65][laughter] So it's kind of appropriate. It's actually Gamecock. So we don't approve of fighting chickens, of course, but it's actually an exciting program, giving the residents a chance to experience fresh eggs. Really appreciate the support of the majority of council. And there are actually 57 interested people, which are 27 additional people from those that are already on the list. So there's a lot of interest out there for doing urban chickens, six from the non-participating districts, but I'm very passionate about this program. There have been absolutely no problems, no diseases, no issues, no dirty. It's just actually a very fun thing for folks to do. It's a great hobby. I really enjoy it myself. And I know Mayor Downs, so the attorney is also involved in the program. And like I say, I think it's just a great program and appreciate the support of the majority of council. And Mayor, thank you for dealing with me when I come up with these crazy ideas, when I go visit other cities, but this has just been a very popular program, and I wouldn't be a bit surprised if they let the next ones go on the next go-around. And Commissioner Stewart, the only reason we didn't want to do 25 additional per district is because our districts have the most interest, and we probably would run out before anybody else would. So again, I think this is a great program, 75 total, and then hopefully we can get to an ordinance to make this permanent, because there have been absolutely no problems with this program, and it's just been a great opportunity for people to grow their own food. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District 5. Commissioner Lineham.
Thank you, Mayor and council. But Mayor, my first announcement is, we're in Florida. There is no dress code.[1621.52][1621.52][laughter] You can wear white shoes whenever you get ready, you can wear whatever you feel like.
As long as they wear the shirt and shoes, we're good, right, Commissioner?
Oh, well, in Florida, you can wear flip-flops with socks. So this is just isn't a dress code. Just wanted to let you know. So if you see me around with, well, that's not true. You're never going to see me with flip-flops and socks except in my own house, when it's a little chilly. Just a few announcements. It's a really good agenda this week, very, very simple. Congratulations to all the volunteers, especially the McNamara folks that we know personally. But Tyrone and I've worked the closest with, and Jody, Jody is my girl power girl, and I just want to congratulate each and every one of them. That was great. And I saw one of the fair housing people, Jody, I mean Daisy Morales, whose son I taught tennis like 100 years ago. He went off to become a great Marine person. So just congratulations to everyone and to the state of Florida on our birthday. I think that's all I've got today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lineham. We'll move to District 6. Commissioner Eames.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start off with condolences to Walter Hawkins on the loss of his stepfather, Norman Paramore, who is also Sherri Paramore's father-in-law. And then congratulations to the McNamara Award recipients on your awards today. Item H3 in our agenda, the 2013-14 Florida Coalition Against Domestic Violence Grant, Invest Grant application. Chief, this is a great thing, obviously, for our community. Here we are maintaining a close partnership and relationship between our police, harbor house, and victims of domestic violence within our community. So this is another great opportunity for us to continue doing the great things to providing some assistance to our victims. And then I'd like to announce that on Friday, April 5, the State of the University Breakfast was celebrated at the Ballroom at Church Street. UCF President John Hitt and those alumni and supporters of the University of Central Florida were there to see President Hitt present, celebrating 50 years of service here in Orlando and starting from the very beginning here in Orlando. Great program and great attendance in that program as well. Then also on Saturday, out at Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake, the two Then also on Saturday, out at Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake, the 2013 Boone Crew from Boone High School hosted the Orlando City Championships for a crew at the park. It was great seeing so many family members there in the park. North Orlando Rowing, Boone High School Rowing, Edgewater High, Lyman High, Lake Brantley, Winter Park, and Oars. Those were the teams that were from the city of Orlando competing in this championship race. The results by team, first place was Winter Park with 938 points, and second place was Oars, the Orlando area rowing society, with 880 points, and third place was Lake Brantley with 535 points. But everyone that I talked to out there really enjoyed the facilities, Mayor. There were a couple that first attended this particular event, but they didn't realize the great resources and what the city of Orlando had to offer with the park there, Bill Frederick Park there at Turkey Lake. And then also on Saturday, I attended the Stand and Ovation Talent Group's grand opening dance studio there at the Village Square, 927 South Golden Avenue. Terri Burns, she's to be commended. This is a true dance studio. You should see the excitement on the kids' faces when they were brought into this room because they had never seen it. Tears were flowing from parents as well as the children. So it was a great opportunity for us to support Terri. And then also, I'd like to announce that we do have a new church in District Six, Community Fellowship of Orlando, Church of God in Christ. The pastor is Mildred Loman Eason, and she will be having her installation celebration on Saturday, May 4th at 4:00 p.m. This will be her official pastoral installation services, and it will be held at St. Mark AME Church, 1968 Bruton Boulevard, Orlando, Florida, where Reverend Terrence R. Gray is the pastor. And last, I'd like to say, go Michigan. And I figured Dave Arnoldhead would raise it up, which it did, because he's a graduate of Michigan. And also, my wife, June Ings, is a graduate of Michigan, and she was in the same class as Barry Larkin, the Major League Baseball Player, Hall of Famer. And so, congratulations. They have made the final four, the two teams. I can't even think of the other team, Dave, so we'll just keep calling, we'll just keep calling Michigan, Mayor. And that's all I have.
Commissioner, you're wearing Louisville colors, though.
Louisville, Kentucky, it is.
All right. We'll move to District One. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things real quick. First of all, I'd like to publicly acknowledge Chuck and Lori Holmes, who are residents in the Village Walk subdivision at Lake Nona. This weekend, they chaired the Cancer Society Relay for Life, did a great job not only chairing it, but executing the plan this weekend. We started Saturday at 2:00, went all night, and finished yesterday morning at 8:00, and they did an extraordinary job. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them. And then on the agenda, item C6, just wanted to highlight that, and thanks staff for continuing to work with the folks at Lake Nona. I think what we're starting to see now is what we've all hoped for, which is the development and the final plans for office buildings, hotel, restaurant, and that area with those employees and patients soon coming to the VA. We'll continue to see it blossom out there, but this is the first step, and I just wanted to thank staff for working through those details. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item. I just want to congratulate all of those involved. A resolution in support of the analysis, analyzing the feasibility of passenger train services from OIA to International Drive. We're moving with state-of-the-art transportation in the state, especially in the city of Orlando, and I'm very happy this is happening. So that's all.
Thank you. And then District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me cover a couple of quick things. Congratulations to Taryn and Tyrone and Captain and Jody for the recognition with the McNamara Awards. It's a wonderful legacy for Chief McNamara to move forward. It's a great way for us to continue to recognize our city family. And of course, to Julie Yost for the work that she does. All of us are up here are thrilled to work with such quality people in the city of Orlando. The corporate 5K, IOA 5K is coming up. I know the city's got some involvement. I want to share one thing, just a little bit of a personal privilege. Each year, the group has provided canned food for the Christian Service Center. We've been using that food to share around to schools and to community centers in the city of Orlando. So I'm thrilled about the opportunity to ask people to come and bring canned food at that event. And so we're looking for a great turnout for that and a wonderful chance to be healthy in our downtown community. The oration contests are going forward. I had a chance to be over at Princeton Elementary and Lake Silver. I just want to mention that because of how wonderful it is to see fifth graders really taking on an opportunity to see how to overcome. That was the, that was the theme this year. Two quick things, kind of on the fun side. The first is that if you hadn't had a chance to see it yet, I'll make sure I share it with the council. But Bubba Watson had a chance to come and visit Dubstret Golf Course. It just came out of the blue. It was one of the things they did with ESPN, and got about eight or nine minutes on national TV and national internet to support of Dubstret and Tap Room, two great amenities in our community. And thrilled to do that. And to watch him hit left-handed with a right-handed club, and to have a, walk on the tee and say, would you like to pick up a fourth? And the guy says, who? And he says, well, I got a fourth coming. And the guy says, well, who is it? Well, it's Bubba Watson. And the guy turns around and says, no, I don't want to play golf with him. I said, he's the Masters Champion. You don't want to play golf with the Masters Champion. Just was great to watch these guys do it. So you get a chance to look at it, look at that. The other thing I want to mention to you is one thing, which you had a chance, on Saturday night, we had an opportunity to celebrate a little bit about the Edgewater High School, Edgewater High School Foundation. And I want to mention one thing that was mentioned there that evening. The new United States Director of Secret Service is an Edgewater High School graduate. If I get any more razz about Boone, I'm going to send somebody after you, Sam.
Yeah, but she was a member of the Orlando Police Department.
Exactly, and learned all those qualities at Edgewater High School. Julia Pearson is the new director, and it's what a wonderful honor for our city to be able to have her be recognized in such a great way, and a tribute to our system here locally, OPD, and the work that she's done. So thank you for all those that are involved in that. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I need to do some of this out of order. The agenda flows against how we procedurally need to do some of this stuff, so unless there's an objection, I'm going to do the NID meeting, and then move to ordinances on second reading, come back to hearings, and then come back to the CRA and adopt the stuff related to the Republic Drive I-4 CRA improvements in that order. So I will recess the city council meeting and convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Director meeting for the purpose of accepting the meeting minutes from the advisory council meeting of February 13th, 2013. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We will adjourn the NID meeting. And we will move to hearings, ordinances on second reading, number two. Madam Clerk, if you would read the title for the record.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida pursuant to Section 163.387 Florida Statutes 2012, amending an ordinance enacted on June 17th, 1995, creating a community redevelopment trust fund for the Interstate 4 Republic Drive Community Redevelopment Area, amending references to the community redevelopment plan for the Interstate 4 Republic Drive Community Redevelopment Area to include the plan amendment approved by the city council on March 25th, 2013, providing an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, a motion is second. This, motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. This hearing is being held in accordance with Chapter 166 Florida Statutes requiring a public hearing prior to ordinance adoption as required by Part III, Chapter 163 Florida Statutes, and Chapter 166 Florida Statutes. Timing notice of this public hearing and action was published in the Orlando Sentinel on March 7th, 2013, and notices were mailed on March 1st, 2013, to all taxing authorities within the Interstate 4 Republic Drive Community Redevelopment Area. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to testify related to this matter? I'll close the hearing. We've already received a motion for the adoption of the attached ordinance as well as authorization for the mayor/mayor pro tem and city clerk to execute the same upon adoption. Is there discussion among commissioners? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Then the motion carries. Motion passes. Then let's go back up to hearings. Can you read that, Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida approving the issuance by the City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency of the not-to-exceed 10,500,000 City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency Tax Increment Revenue Bonds, Republic Drive, Universal Boulevard District, Series 2013, to finance certain public improvements within the Republic Drive, Universal Boulevard District, including design and construction of pedestrian bridge and related signage, equipment, landscaping, hardscaping, sidewalk modifications and additions, roadway improvements, and stormwater improvements. Approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a second supplemental indenture of trust with respect to such bonds, providing certain other authorizations, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Move to adopt. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. I'll now open a public hearing concerning the proposed adoption of a resolution approving the issuance by the CRA of not-to-exceed $10.5 million in tax increment revenue bonds, Republic Drive/Universal Boulevard District Series 2013. Purpose of the bonds is to finance certain public improvements within the district, including the design and construction of a pedestrian bridge and related signage, equipment, landscaping, sidewalk improvements, and roadway and stormwater improvements pursuant to Section 163.346 Florida Statutes. This hearing was advertised in the Orlando Sentinel on March 28th, 2013, and notices to taxing authorities were mailed on March 25th, 2013. I'll open this hearing for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? If not, I will close the hearing, call for commissioner comments. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? So the motion carries. Now we will recess the city council meeting. We'll convene the CRA meeting without objection. And there's an item, is a CRA resolution authorizing the CRA's issuance of not-to-exceed $10.5 million tax increment revenue bonds related to the Republic Drive, Universal Boulevard District Series 2013. These are the bonds that were approved by the city council at the just-concluded public hearing. So now I need a motion for the CRA to adopt Move to adopt. Same resolution. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Discussion among commissioners, or CRA members, actually. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries. Okay, that brings us back to hearings, ordinances on second reading. Madam Clerk, if you would read the, read the ordinance under hearings audit, second reading number one.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending Chapter 56.07 Orlando City Code Transportation Impact Fee Rate Schedule by deleting Section 56.07(c), which requires annual indexing of the transportation impact fee rate, providing severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Mayor.
Yep, I'm reading the explanation right here. You want to give it, Maureen?
No, I'll happy for you to give the explanation, but you need to close the CRA meeting and reconvene the city council.
Oh, did I?
Which I think was implicit in what you did.
Okay, then we will, without objection, close the CRA meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. And I will take notice that even though we were in the CRA meeting, do you want us to read that again, Madam?
You don't, you don't need to reread it. I think it was clear contextually, but just in abundance of caution, we've now corrected any technical deficiency that may have occurred.
Okay, then we will, how about if we take a motion to adopt the reading from the CRA meeting as consistent for these council meetings? Is there a motion on that?
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen, all in favor of the reading that occurred possibly during the CRA meeting as counting for the city council meeting, indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? I am sure that is in Robert's rules somewhere. All right, commissioners, this audit's proposed removing our transportation impact fee ordinance's annual indexing provision. After briefings and feedback from some of you, staff is developing a new proposal for the ongoing review of our transportation impact fees. Staff will propose a new ordinance in the coming weeks or months, but for now, since we have already advertised this ordinance, and interested parties may be here to testify in the ordinance, we'll need to officially open a public hearing and then vote to disapprove the ordinance. Okay? So is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Why don't we just take a motion on the ordinance and all vote no, Maureen? Do we need an affirmative motion to disapprove, or do we want to make a motion on the ordinance and then just?
No, I, I think you're, I think you're fine. You just proceed.
Okay, I'll take a motion either way. Just tell me, what do you want, a motion to approve that we will all vote no for, or you can make a motion to disapprove and we'll vote yes for? Who wants a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Kyle?
You can't, yeah, you can only move something forward positively.
You can only move something that you agree with, which is why we scripted it as a move disapproval. Now, you can always second something you disagree with, but the motion maker has to always agree with the motion they make. So that would put you in the position if you happen to vote for approval.
Right, you're officially proposing it.
Okay, I've seen people vote against motions they've made in the legislature all the time.
That doesn't mean they were right.
Yes, that's true. Okay. All right, then how about withdrawing that motion?
Withdraw the motion, motion to disapprove.
Okay, motion to disapprove. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to disapprove by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Let's see, we've already had the, any testimony, so we can move to discussion. Hearing none. All of those in favor of the motion to disapprove the ordinance indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion to disapprove carries. I should have read those notes before I got here. Okay, that brings us to ordinances on first reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending Chapter 56 of the Orlando City Code Transportation Impact Fee by amending Section 56.04, amending Section 56.15 to provide a graduated transportation impact fee exemption for transit-oriented developments, providing severability, actions, codification, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Sound move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending and restating the planned development zoning district regulations for the Nona Park Plan Development PD, generally located north of Kensington Row Court, south and east of Dowden Road and west of Narcusi Road, comprised of 26.1 acres more or less, amending the planned development district's development standards, site plans, and conditions of development, directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those against? All right, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's growth management plan by changing the future land use map designation from residential medium intensity to mixed-use corridor medium intensity on property generally located at the southwest corner of Conroy Road and Vineland Road, comprised of 6.55 acres more or less, directing amendment of the city's official future land use map series, providing for severability, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Sound move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Linum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none. All in favor indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to sidewalk cafes in the public right-of-way, amending various provisions of Chapters 33, 54, and other parts of the Orlando City Code as they relate to sidewalk cafes and conducting business within the public right-of-way, clarifying and amending provisions relating to sidewalk cafe permit applications, permit conditions, and the substantive regulations covering the maintenance and layout of sidewalk cafes, providing updated terminology, technical amendments, and correcting cross-references, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, codification, correction of scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Sound move. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries. And that will conclude the official business of the Orlando City Council today. Thank you for tuning in.